I call the board's select meeting of June 11th, 2018 to order. Please rise for the closing votes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item we have is the approval of the minutes of the May 14th, 2018, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 14th, 2018.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Okay, it's past the hour 7:00 PM. Sophia Gawa, Clam Box Cafe. To consider requests for common victular and entertainment license for the Clam Box Cafe for premises located at 14 East Main Street. Okay, tell us a little bit about your business.
My name is Sophia Gawa, and I own Clam Box Cafe. We've opened a couple of weeks ago. We're located at 14 East Main Street, and we serve fried, baked seafoods, and we'll be serving some salads as well, and we have a menu here for you to review.
And the reason you need the common victular license, I understand you don't have tables inside, but you have tables outside.
Tables, tables outside.
So that's the necessity for this.
Yeah, picnic tables.
Any questions from the board? Heard all wonderful things so far, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Been really good.
Yes.
Great.
Madam Chair, if we could, we'd like to thank the town administrator and the fire chief for helping us get our inspections done so quickly and get open. It was definitely a big help. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I just want to make a comment, too, that the place looks wonderful.
Thank you.
That's probably been the biggest comment I've heard.
Yes, it is such an improvement over all these years of, I know people have been in and out of there trying to do business, and I felt that it hasn't, they haven't really been as successful as I had hoped, but I think part of it is that you've made it very attractive.
Yep.
The signage, the color of the building, picnic tables renewed, it looks great, and the fence looks great.
Yeah, I think that fence really.
We were trying to make it a little nostalgic of the older takeouts.
Uh huh.
We felt that to be successful, it needed that facelift, it just, it couldn't do it.
It looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application for a common victular and entertainment license as submitted by Sophia Gawa, doing business as Clam Box Cafe, for premises located at 14 East Main Street, providing that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It's past the hour 7:05 PM. Jean Colleen, paired, poured, and plated, to consider requests for a common victular license for Kilty Incorporated, doing business as, paired, poured, and plated, for premises located at 290 West Main Street. David's still on the phone.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Taberry, and I'm the wife and partner of Jean Colleen, and, wife, I'm the wife. She's my wife, I'm her husband. Anyway, that shows you, day off, that's what happens, it doesn't work. That's why I'm here in shorts as well. Anyway, we're applying for a common vic license because we want to put a couple of tables outside our premises. We're in the same plaza where Lala Java and Lemontello was. We've been open about a year, and we want to do some food prep types of things for people to take. No table service, just come in, grab a sandwich, and go out and have a seat.
Okay, so there'll be no tables inside, then?
No.
Any questions? Jason?
Just noted that in your application, you acknowledge that there's no alcohol sales for consumption on the premises.
Correct.
It's, that's a separate.
Right, that's a separate license.
Separate license. We wouldn't do any pouring or serving of food or liquor, so.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the application for a common victular license as submitted by Kilty, Inc., DBA paired, poured, and plated, for premises located at 290 West Main Street, providing that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Good luck.
Thank you very much. And by the way, the building inspector came on Friday to do his inspection, and then he came back Friday evening for our Friday evening tasting.
So, that was good. So we have a new customer.
Great.
We'd like to see the rest of you, too. Don's in, but we'd like to see the rest as well.
Yeah, I have been in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's past the hour 7:10 PM. Chirag Patel, Conno Lodge Inn, to consider a request for a common victular and entertainment license for KSP Incorporated, doing business as Conno Lodge Inn, for premises located at 380 Southwest Cut Off. You've been remodeling for a while, and do you want to tell us about it?
Yes, my name is Will Kumar Patel, and we, we have been remodeling last, since last May, it's almost a year. It took us a year to renovate the whole place, and we finally passed all the inspection with the fire chief, which is here, and also building inspector, and finally, we got the occupancy permit a couple of weeks ago, right after the Memorial Day weekend, and we did, made a lot of improvements in the building. We put a new fire sprinkler systems and all that for public safety and all. So, we're just requesting our common victular license for, serve the breakfast in the morning for the guest who stays in the hotel, please.
Chief, do you have anything to say?
Has there been any significant updates or changes to the building? Probably the most significant, one of which is the sprinkler system. I'm thrilled to have there. So, yeah, no, we have no concerns.
Okay, questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the application for a common victular and entertainment license as submitted by KSP Incorporated, doing business as the Conno Lodge Inn, for premises located at 380 Southwest Cut Off, providing that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Do I hear any of this discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's past like 7:15, but Northborough Rotary Club, to consider an application for a one-day special license for wine and malt beverages for premises located at 244 West Main Street.
Madam Chair, not seeing the representative from the Rotary here, my suggestion would be to skip down to the next item on the agenda, give them a few minutes to, to come.
Okay. June Hubbard Ward, Finance Director, approval execution of bonds and bond anticipation notes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm here before the board tonight to ask you to execute the significant documents, this is the pile, to borrow the funds for both a band, which is a bond anticipation note, a temporary financing, in the amount of $2,719,000, as well as a permanent bond, a 15-year bond, in the amount of $2,275,000. These are the bond borrowing authorizations approved at previous town meetings for various projects. The bond includes the Church Street Bridge project, the portion that we borrowed, $927,000, voted in April 2016. It also includes the Hudson Street Sewer Pump Station design and construction, and that was a $1.6 million project. So those were issued temporarily, the projects were done, they've been spent, and now we went out to the bond market to issue permanent 15-year bonds for that $2,275,000. It was originally $2,527,000. We did receive a $252,000 premium. The size of the issue gets resized, and that premium reduces the amount that you ultimately have to borrow, and thereby reduces your borrowing costs. These municipal bonds are traded on the mark, on the financial markets, so we do go through a lengthy process in order to go out to the market. This is what we call the official statement, it's basically like the bond prospectus. So it's information we have to prepare about Northborough, so that an investor could have full disclosure if they wanted to go out and buy our tax-exempt municipal bonds as an investment. And part of this process included a ratings review, a bond rating review with Moody's Investor Service, that's an independent credit rating agency that went through a lengthy analysis of our finances, our management, our bond prospectus, and issued us, we maintained the rating we had before that. We went out to the market last, in January of 2016, for the Lincoln Street School project, and we maintained that AA1 bond rating. So we were pleased with that. So when you go out into the market, we were pleased to receive four qualified bids, we accept the lowest, and it was awarded for the bond to Fidelity Capital Markets at a total interest cost of 2.56, about 30 basis points higher than the last time we went out, two and a half years ago, which is pretty, pretty good considering that interest rates have been inching upward. So, and that was a 20-year bond, this is a 15-year bond. So the bands, which are temporary one-year note, we again received four bids, we have to go out to bid for that, too, and we had a net interest cost of 1.8812 percent. The projects for the band, it's $2,719,000, include a portion of the fire department ambulance, we're making pay downs on that piece of equipment through the EMS revolving account, so it's a portion that we're banning. The West Main Street Pump Station, $400,000, sewer inflow and infiltration, $500,000, and then the Community Preservation Act White Cliffs Acquisition Project, the $1.7 million borrowing authorization portion of that acquisition. That's interesting to note that right now, currently, these notes are issued tax-exempt, with the future of that property uncertain. If it were to be leased, or, you know, some other non-tax exempt purpose used for that building, the permanent bonds would then reflect that, and they would have to be issued as taxable bonds. So it's, it's not certain what the future is right now, but that has to be closely monitored, and Bond Council kept abreast of what progress we make towards what the ultimate use of that building will be. But for right now, they're in a temporary tax-exempt one-year note. So if anybody has any questions about...
Jason?
Just touching upon that White Cliffs thing that you just mentioned, how long a period do we expect to finance White Cliffs on bond anticipation notes? That would be a one-year renewal for some period of time?
We could borrow, we could borrow up to 10 years in a temporary format if we so chose.
Okay. And just for the benefit of the audience, the payments on bond anticipation notes are interest-only, we're not paying.
Interest only, yes, exactly that. We could choose to make a pay down if, if the committee wanted to advance this project and basically fund it early, there could be a pay down on a bond anticipation note, so that they could get through it quicker. We were, just because we don't know the ultimate purpose doesn't mean you couldn't pay towards it to get through that and approximate like a, a 10-year pay down.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing no questions, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve and execute permanent, tax-exempt municipal bonds in the amount of $2,527,000, and bond anticipation notes in the amount of $2,719,000. It's presented by Finance Director June Hubbard Ward.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. We have a lot of signing to do.
Thank you. Right, it's 15 bonds and one note, and then the supporting dot.
Madam Chair, while you're, while you're executing your signatures on these bonds, if I may take a moment, just to, to comment on the bond rating process itself, it's a very interesting process because we spend close to two hours on the phone with an analyst who is going through all of our financial statements and asking us questions, not only about what we've done in the past, what we're doing currently, but what our plans are in the future. So our bond rating is a, is a AA1, this is the highest rating the town's ever been able to achieve, and I've jokingly said in the past that the only way we'd get a stronger bond rating would be if you, if you all would get better jobs and, and live in mansions. So there's several components that go into looking at your, your bond rating. One is a kind of the socioeconomic background of the town and the strength of the tax base itself, and that's why you'll see sometimes communities that are very well-off closer to Boston with excellent bond ratings, even if they get themselves into a little bit of trouble in terms of poor management, they're just so wealthy that they have that capacity to tax, and that makes the, the investors feel more comfortable, and certainly the bond rating goes a little easier on them. Now, Northborough, we're a fairly well-off community, but we're certainly not like those communities close in to Boston. So the management of Northborough is what pushes us to this AA1 rating, and it's, it's the fact that we have written comprehensive financial policies, that we implement them in a consistent basis. They cite the fact that we are funding our long-term obligations, our pension obligations, our other post-employment benefits, the fact that we have a formal debt policy and we follow it. Again, another big component to our bond rating is our level of financial reserves. For a community our size with our socioeconomic makeup, the bond rating agencies want to see us with reserves, you know, as close to 10% as we can. Our policy is 5 to 10%. We strive to maintain it at at least 8%, where it currently resides. These are all very positive things from a bond analyst's standpoint. They were very complimentary to the town during the process. There were no notable concerns or issues on the horizon, but the one, the one comment that we saw was, or we received was, stay the course, continue to manage yourselves well, continue to maintain appropriate reserves, follow your policies, and barring any significant unforeseen situation with the tax base, we should remain relatively stable. One of the pieces that they were very pleased to see was the town's financial trend monitoring report. Pretty much any indicator of the town's financial condition that a bond rating agency would review and, and try to put a grade on, we, as municipal officials, already do that for ourselves. So we know exactly where we stand when we meet with the analysts, and we know that we have a good quality product that we're putting out on the street for the investors. So, again, all that stuff plays through, and the bond rating, it plays through on the favorable interest rate that we get. We've actually found that when we go out to bond, sometimes we get a little bit better rate than another community, they may actually have a higher bond rating than us, because they look at everything and they take everything into consideration. So again, just the discipline of the town with its policies, the consistent management, the financial reserves, and the fact that we are not balancing the budget on an annual basis on, with gimmicks. We're not, we limit one-time revenues in the operating budget, we aren't balancing our budget by not investing in our roadways, or our infrastructure, or our buildings. Our budget and our overall financial management is based on a very solid financial foundation that's based in best practices and, and policies that we have all agreed to follow. So, have I filled enough time while you guys sign, or are you still signing? Keep talking if you guys...
Keep talking, John, keep talking.
You could just repeat that, that would be awesome.
So, again, also the fact that the town follows national best practices in terms of its budget, we have had eight consecutive national awards for our, for our operating budget documents, the fact that we have a comprehensive six-year capital improvement plan that we actually fund, it's not just a wish list. These are all factors that play into our overall bond rating. I think the easiest way to explain is if you think about your own personal lives, if you're, if you're paying your bills on an annual basis because you're not maintaining your vehicle, you're not maintaining your furnace, your roof is getting ready to leak, you don't have any money set aside to fix it, the paint's peeling on your house, the wood's rotting, are you really, are you really balanced? You might be balanced on an annual basis, but you're not balanced when you look out in the long term, and I think the thing that we do very, very well here in Northborough is, we are balanced on an annual basis, but we also balance our long-term obligations with our service demands. In other words, we don't have a balanced budget by slashing and cutting public safety, and we have 30 kids in the schools, in the classrooms, things of that nature. So you have to hit all of these bases in order to be truly balanced and sustainable, and, and I think the bond rating agency and the analysts recognize that on all, in each and every base, that the town of Northborough does an excellent job in that regard.
Did you mention the free cash policy, John?
The free cash, thank you for, thank you for raising that, Jason, I appreciate that. Well, it's interesting, in the, in the, in the rating, they specifically cited the town of Northborough's free cash policy, which is, was adopted in 2010, had with the unanimous support of every financial board and committee, including the school department. And what that does is it, it, it limits the amount of one-time revenues going into the operating budget to 1% and diverts one-time revenues to our capital plan. So that's why we don't, you're looking at these bonds that are before you tonight, you have Church Street, which is a, which is a $2 million project, and you have the Hudson Street Pump Station, which is a $1.5 million project. We don't issue bonds for pickup trucks, we put roofs on school buildings, we put $1.1 million into our roadway infrastructure every year on a pageable basis. These are all things that lead to our, our, our positive financial condition, and they were very impressed with the fact that, A, we had a free cash policy, and B, we have consistently implemented and followed that policy since fiscal 2012. I can keep going if you want. It's all good news.
You're gonna need another five minutes or so.
You look happy, you're done.
Take a breath. Didn't see any that you missed, unless I missed it, too.
Two done.
Two done.
Thanks for waiting. Sorry about this.
All right. You want to go back to the Rotary while they're finishing signing?
Okay, while you finish our signing, we're gonna go back to our 7:15 item, agenda item, Northborough Rotary Club, to consider an application for a one-day special license for wine and malt beverages for premises located at 244 West Main Street. And John?
Oh, yes, the representative from the Rotary just had contacted us, they, they have a, an issue, they aren't gonna make it to the meeting, so, but briefly, this is a one-day liquor license, and really what I want to focus is on, on is the purpose of this. The purpose of the one-day liquor license is for the Rotary's annual Pride and Workmanship Award Dinner, and this year, I am very, very pleased to announce that the recipient is David Robillard, affectionately known as Robo, he is our highway superintendent. And I have to tell you, I was lobbying very hard for this award. I know Dawn has been a recipient in the past, as well as Kathy Jupiter, Town Planner. I lobbied very hard, as did the board, signed the letter at the time endorsing Robo for this particular award. Robo is one of those town employees who is always there, he's always behind the scenes, he never likes to be in the front, but he is the grease that, that actually makes this town run. And he's exactly the kind of gentleman who does not want to be recognized by an award like this, which is why he is the exact in the type of individual that needs to be recognized, because he'll never stand out in the limelight, he'll never toot his own horn, so we need to do it for him. So this is a one-day liquor license for the event that will be held at St. Rose of Lima Parish at 244 West Main Street, it's on June 19th, between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM. In your, in the memo in your packet, Fire Chief, Building Inspector, and Sergeant Brian Griffin, Sergeant Detective Brian Griffin has reviewed the application. This is something that we've done in the past. The only other thing that is being requested, again, that the board has done in the past, is that we have waived the, waived the one-day liquor license fee for this event, given the nonprofit nature of it.
Questions from the board? Leslie?
Not a question, it's just a, a statement, just, first of all, these are very worthwhile events, and I think that Robo is very deserving, as, as you said, he doesn't like to be in the limelight, but he's always there. Not in the limelight, but he's always at an event, he's always helping, doing, filling in, making things happen, so. He, he, that's, what a great person for that, that's great.
Yeah, he is, and even at the fire.
Yeah.
He was right there.
Yes.
No matter what happens in the town of Northbridge, seems to just appear. It's amazing, so I can't think of a more deserving person. So, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application for a special one-day license as submitted by George Pember on behalf of the Rotary Club of Northborough, Inc., for an event to be held at St. Rose of Lima Parish, 244 West Main Street, on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM. Per the recommendation of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, the license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after the event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages prior to and immediately following the event, and further waive the license fee.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussions? Hearing none, all is in favor. Past the hour 7:25 PM, Rick Leef, Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation, request to transfer available funds for completion of the affordable housing project by NAHC and Habitat for Humanity for property located at 33 to 35 and 37 to 39 Main Street. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. Just want to give you a quick update on where things stand on the project. You know, there are two houses that we had purchased from Trinity Church for the purpose of creating four affordable housing units, two condominiums in each building, and the smaller of the two houses is just about complete. That was the house that the kids from Asabat Tech did most of the work on, all the plumbing and electrical and carpentry and HVAC work, and right now, if it hasn't changed, the plan is on June 25th, the two families that were selected for that home will take possession. So we're really happy that we've come that far, and we'll have two families in the smaller house by the end of this month. The larger house was quite a bit more work, that's the Old Gale General Store, and once the interior demolition was done, and there were a lot of issues arose which weren't anticipated around the structural integrity of the house, and due to that fact, the actual completion date, which we're hoping for the end of 2018, has now moved out into, into first quarter, early second quarter 2019. But at this point, all the structural issues have been remediated, and now the renovation work, you know, is well underway, kind of there, as far as that goes. So the reason we're here tonight, and just, I meant to say this, so this is Tim Freeman. Tim is the Executive Director of the Metro West Greater Worcester Habitat for Humanity, and Habitat for Humanity's basically been doing all the coordination and development of the project, you know, with the volunteers, their own volunteers and the school kids and everyone else who's participated, and I thank Tim very much for all of his help on the project. It's something well beyond what the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation could accomplish with our small volunteer force. So the reason we're here tonight is that, as you saw in the information provided in your packet, due to the structural issues in the larger house, and the amount of extra time and expense it took to get those resolved, and also due to some issues around drainage and parking that came up once the engineering department started working with Habitat... and parking that came up once the engineering department started working with Habitat to outline what needed to be done to get all of that work done properly, there was some unanticipated cost as far as drainage and parking, and some reconstruction of walls and sidewalks and things like that. The net of it was that we had come to you originally and told you this was gonna be an $800,000 project, and the plan was gonna be for the town to finance half of it through CPA funding, $400,000, and Habitat would provide the other $400,000 through their own fundraising, gifts and kind, volunteer labor. And if it weren't for some of these unanticipated extra work that had to be done, the $800,000 budget would have been met. But based on a meeting we had with them on April 5th, it looks like the final cost to do the project is going to be $900,000. And as we discussed that, it became clear that for all the efforts that Habitat has done to raise the money and get the volunteer labor, they weren't gonna be able to come up with the extra $100,000. So we proposed that the towns split that $100,000 overage 50-50 again, as we did with the original project, where the town would consider providing another $50,000 of CPA revenue, and Habitat would find the other $50,000 through fundraising they're doing right now, and additional donated gifts and kind. We went to the CPC last Thursday night and presented them to this. The CPC agreed with that. I think they sent you a letter recommending your approval of this project. And so our purpose here tonight is to ask for your approval to do this. We have right now, in unexpended affordable housing CPA revenue, $400,000. We had a half a million dollars approved at town meeting in 2015, and we took $400,000 of that for this project. We spent $300,000 to buy the two houses from Trinity Church. There was another $100,000 allocated to offset some of the construction expense, and during 2017, we presented invoices to the town accountant, and he reimbursed Habitat for that of $100,000. So the $400,000 originally approved for the project has been spent, so now what we're asking for is $50,000 more, and we'd like to, what we'd like to do is, because there's still $100,000 remaining from the 2015 grant, we'd like this $50,000 to come out of that particular warrant article. That's the most, the one that goes furthest back into the past. So that's where we are. Like I said, the project is moving along, two families will be in, and we're hopeful to get the other two families in, you know, sometime early on in 2019. So that's kind of the background, and we're willing to take any questions or comments you might have.
Questions from the board? Dawn, did you have anything to say?
No, traditionally, the way we've handled the Northborough Affordable Housing Corp. appropriations is town meeting, goes to town meeting, they make the approval and the appropriation, subject to a contract with the town, which is, again, subject to approval by the CPC and the board as well. There are numerous checks and balances to get to this point, so there's funding available from a legal standpoint, there is no issue releasing it, it just comes down to whether or not if the board concurs with the, the need and the project with the CPC, then it would be a simple vote to release those funds.
Questions, Leslie?
First of all, it sounds like a reasonable request, for sure, and I just wanted to add that a few of us were at the, kind of a walkthrough, boy, is that a couple months ago?
A while ago.
Yeah. Where the memory, what is that thing called?
The time capsule.
Time capsule.
Yes.
Yes, the memory tube, whatever you wanna call that.[839.01][839.01](laughter) So I could think of the memory tube. Wow. Was buried, and, so that was really interesting to see. But more interesting, too, was really seeing the kids and how motivated they were, and how happy they looked to be in there doing what they're learning to do. Very impressive-looking buildings, and it's amazing how much space is in there.
Isn't it?
And looking at how that was all gonna be configured with the kitchen and the bathroom, where the tubs are gonna be and all that. Just so much work, and they've done such a fantastic job.
Yeah, we had a, an event last week for appreciation for the school. John made it out and spoke, as well as a number of school committee members, and the kids were just, we had pizza for them, and they're in their glory, but they made it happen, and they came forth, and, you know, their teachers and their supervisors, and the way that they handle theirselves, it's very impressive, so.
Very much so. Thank you for all your work.
You bet.
Both of you. Any other questions, Jason?
I just agree that, just very impressed by all the volunteer contributions from Assabett, from other volunteer groups that have worked on the project, and it's just been a tremendous community effort, really, to get this project going on, in addition to Habitat and Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. So it's just an excellent example of collaboration and what we can do when we work together well.
Everybody came forward when we needed them, yeah.
Yeah, so, very pleased with the project. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the release of $50,000 to the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation to offset renovation expenses of properties located at 33 to 35 and 37 to 39 Main Street pursuant to Article 57 of the 2015 Annual Town Meeting.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your support on this project.
Thank you.
And I'll contact Kathy, John, we'll get started on the funding agreement, the $50,000.
Okay. Pass the hour 7:30 p.m. David Parenti, Fire Chief, approval and execution of a statewide public safety mutual aid agreement with the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. Chief?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, what I'm here tonight is for the approval and execution of the statewide mutual aid program. Back in 2010, the state, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Sections 4J and 4K, approved the statewide mutual aid plan for public safety and public works. And the purpose of it is, it expands beyond our normal mutual aid agreements, so, we have mutual aid agreements through Fire District 14 that we utilized extensively just this past weekend, and also through District 7 and, do we get to District 8? I think we actually got to District 8 this past weekend. What we don't have is an agreement that goes statewide. And what this agreement does is, is it does just that, it goes statewide. So if we were to have a major incident here in Northborough, and we needed to bring resources from the west side of the state, we couldn't do that easily. What this does, this allows us to bring paramedics, EMTs, police officers, public, whatever we need, to Northborough, and they can operate as if they're in their home region, which is critical, especially when talking emergency medical care. So it allows us to, to do that. One of the other things it does is it opens up through EMAC, which is the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, which is a agreement between states. So, for instance, what happened back in Katrina, when they were getting terrible, and they had to bring in resources from out of state. It would allow the same thing for us to bring in resources from out of state. If we had a major issue here in Mass., and we couldn't use anyone in Mass., we could have Texas come up and help us, and they can operate through this. But you have to be a member of this program in order to do that. One of the concerns was, was that, well, does this, does this require us, as a town in Northborough, to send people? And the answer is, no, it doesn't. If we get a request from Pittsfield and says, hey, we need this from you, we say, sorry, we need it ourselves, it's not an issue. They say, okay, not a problem, we'll, we'll ask somebody else. And, and the reason for that is, we don't wanna shorten, short us if there's, you know, something else going on somewhere else. So it's, it's a great, it's a great program, it's a, it's an opt-in, opt-out, so in other words, a signal signature allows us to opt-in, within 30 days it becomes effective. If the town, for some reason, decides, ah, we don't like this, we feel that there is some issues, or something comes up somewhere else in the state, you can easily take another vote, 10 days, opt-out. So it's very simple.
Questions, Leslie?
First of all, it sounds like an ideal thing, but when I hear the phrase "opt-out," why would we opt-out if we've opted in? Are there some downsides to this? Are there liability things that we're opening ourselves up to?
Go ahead, John.
If I can give a little bit of background, that might be beneficial to the board. Some of you were involved in this discussion. So when this, when this program originally became available to us, we were in transition, so we had a new fire chief, we have a new police chief, we have a new DPW director, and we have a new health agent. And I was hesitant to move forward with this initiative until we had all that staff settled, and we had a full appreciation from those various departments about what this agreement was really obligating us to, and what the pros and cons of it were. Now, interestingly enough, I had some good conversations with the town of Shrewsbury, as well as the town of Westboro, and, and my counterparts there, and basically, we came to the conclusion that this doesn't really get us much. On a day-to-day basis, it really wasn't going to be anything critical for us. And my counterparts, again, in Westboro and Shrewsbury, both long-term managers, who have been around and seen how many times the state has dangled a carrot, and then hit you with the stick afterwards. So, would you like to join and get 50% of your police education covered? Sure, okay, they walked away from that. Hey, if you form a regional high school, we'll cover your transportation, they walked away from that. Charter school reimbursements, it's at, what, less than 60% funding? I can go on and on about the broken promises from the state. So we looked at this, we, and, and if you look at what happened with the fire in the downtown, with District 14, we have every resource that we needed. However, really what's pushing this issue is the state really wants everybody to be involved in this. We're one of the last communities, along with Westboro and Shrewsbury, and they just, they just decided to, to, to sign on as well. And one of the reasons why is the state saying, if you're not part of this, you may not qualify, or it might be counted against you for some potential grants in the future, along those lines.
There's potential grant issues, and there's potential issues with faraway districts not sending tech teams, or something like that, but that's about it.
So, you know, at this point, it's prudent for us to join, it's, it does formalize a lot of things, and, and it eliminates any ambiguity about liability, who owns injured-on-duty, who owns equipment failures, anything like that. So we know what we're getting into, it sort of levels the playing field. It's not a bad idea, but we just, we're always a little bit, frankly, hesitant when it comes to the state with these types of programs, because what becomes voluntary then sometimes shifts to being mandatory, with strings and other things attached to it. But at this point in time, it, it makes sense for us to move forward. We don't see any downside to it, there's some, some positive aspects to it as well. The big issue that I didn't want to do was push this forward when we had so much transition in the departments that are going to be affected by that. Oh, we also have a new building inspector, which I didn't mention. So we were going through all this turnover, we didn't want to obligate them to something until we had a little bit more experience, a little bit more understanding. But at this point, I would recommend strongly that you approve this. We don't see any downsides to it at this point in time, and there's some positive aspects. And we certainly won't, wouldn't want to be penalized for any grant applications because we weren't members.
Any questions? Jason?
Couple of questions. Is it fair to say that in practice, most events are of a scale that the local or surrounding mutual aid is sufficient?
Oh, no question.
To respond for our situation?
An example for this would be the, the tornado when it came through Springfield.
Yeah.
This would have been, something like this would have been, because we actually sent crews.
Yeah.
To that. So this would have been in place for something like that. And it gets rid of, as, as the town administrator say, the ambiguity of who's responsible for the people if there's an injury, who's responsible for the cost, that's all cleaned up, and it helps a lot.
Okay, and the second question I had was, for the circumstance of some department that has some kind of expensive or specialized equipment, does that, is that likely to cause a greater demand on that for other communities that would not, you know, obtain that piece of equipment for their own use, or, or something like that?
No, not likely, could that, it would be too far of a response. This would be more for a, if we're going out west, it's a task force, so there's five of these, or five of ambulances, or five tower trucks.
Okay.
But it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't say, we want Northborough's this, or we want Westboro's this, that, that, that's not the purpose of this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, do we hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the statewide mutual aid agreements for public safety and public works pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Sections 4J and 4K, and to authorize the town administrator to execute the same.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional conversation or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Motion carries and leave for affirmative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate you taking a point on that.
Okay, reports. Julianne?
Yes. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing me to represent our town, a town I have always been proud of, but over the last few weeks have been even more impressed by the engagement of our community. Recently, I attended several events in Northborough. On May 21st, the Friends of Northborough Senior Center held their annual meeting and reception. On May 28th, we had our annual Memorial Day Parade, and on June 6th, I attended a special event, a special thank-you event for the Assabett Valley students who are working on the Habitat for Humanity Main Street project. Each of these events illustrates what it means to be a community, and not just a town. These were three events representing three different age groups, and yet there was the same spirit of giving, partnership, and sharing of talents at each event. To all of the people who made those projects and events happen, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks. And we have to comment that the response to the unfortunate fire at R&amp;T Furniture Store was remarkable. My deepest thanks to our fire department and emergency services, and all of the surrounding fire departments who contained the fire and prevented more extensive damage. This does not happen without your diligence and hard work, and most importantly, your bravery and sacrifice. Many thanks to all of you. So, in the spirit of community engagement, I'd like to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the first meeting of the Master Plan Steering Committee, and I hope many of you will be there.
Let's just, can you report?
Just to piggyback on Selectman Hersch's comments, a big thank you to the, to Fire and Police Department. Besides the, the obvious performance that you guys had during the fire, I, I also was very impressed with the, the feedback from the community, and I don't know if you're aware of the, or at least I was not aware of, the, the confidence that the community has in your abilities and your services, and that is something that I'm proud of, and I'm very appreciative of. So thank you to both the fire, police, and, and everybody else in the emergency services. I also wanted to thank various boards around town. We had a conflict tomorrow for the Master Planning Board, and some people were able to move their schedules around so that those meetings didn't conflict, so I'm, I just want to say thank you to the people that were able to, to change that schedule. And thanks to all the people that came out for the Memorial Day Parade, that was the first time I had a chance to march in the parade, it was a very excellent event, and learned a lot about the history of town, and, and those who have served, and the veterans in town. And lastly, I've been serving on the, the Council of Aging for the last year, and now that I've been elected to the Board of Selectmen, that is something that I had to resign from, and I just wanted to say thank you to Adrian Cost and Kelly Burke at the Senior Center for all the work they do. They do a absolutely marvelous job up there, and if anybody in the community hasn't been out to the Senior Center, please go and check out the programs and the facility, they do an absolutely fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie?
Okay, the first thing I wanted to do is mention that Jason and I met as part of the interview committee this evening, and I wanted to, one, thank volunteers who are coming forward, and, two, make some motions regarding this. The first one is I move the board vote to appoint Tracy Camerano to the Parks and Rec Commission for a partial three-year term.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor?
Second, is I move the board vote to appoint Michael Ducheno as an alternate member to the Historic District Commission for a partial two-year term.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor?
Third, I move the board vote to appoint Zoning Board of Appeals alternate member Paul Tagliafari to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a full-voting member for a partial two-year term.
Second.
All is in favor?
And lastly, I move the board vote to appoint Zoning Board of Appeals member Jeffrey Leland as an alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a partial two-year term. He is, the two of them are just reversing their roles.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor? That also carries in the affirmative.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Also, too, obviously, wanted to, to mention the, the fire, which was really quite an amazing situation. I've never really quite witnessed anything like that in town in recent years. The, the one that comes to mind most recently for me is, is the O'Briens' fire, but this was just an unbelievable situation that... But, this was just an unbelievable situation, that, one was amazing, because people came to watch, it kind of appeared out of nowhere. It was amazing, it was almost like, let's say, the Applefest Parade, and the way people were lined up down the street watching, people couldn't believe it. They had their cameras out, and people were just really in a state of shock, quite frankly. And to see the smoke billowing, and the blackness down the street, and the national grid having to show up and turn off the power to that certain areas, a lot had to go on. And speaking of Robo, he appeared in his DPW truck, and I'm not sure exactly what he did, but he was there, he did what he needed to do. Police was there, really did an unbelievable job. Mike Bissett was going around the perimeter, along the sidewalks, making sure people weren't too close. Everybody had their role, and everyone did it wonderfully. And Building Inspector was there, he was doing his thing. And, obviously, the fire department was really, I almost can't put words to it. I think about this situation, and I realize that, you know, we've been talking about this as a board for two or three years, really kind of bringing it up occasionally, talking about the fact that that building was an eyesore, which it was. But, you know, as I walked around and stood and talked to people, I realized that there is also a sentimental attachment to that building. You know, we tend to look at it in very black and white terms, and think, "Well, that's an eyesore, we need to get rid of that building." I do want the public to know that we did bring it up, that based on the tax situation and the fact that previously it hadn't been determined to be a hazard, there wasn't anything the town could do. But, there are a lot of people who have lived in town for a very, very long time, they have good memories of R&amp;T, there are things that happened there, there were furniture that was bought there, that they still have in their homes, and so there was a lot of sentiment around that. Bill Liver, you do? Yeah? So, you know, so there is some sadness surrounding this as well. But, to see our crews doing what they needed to do so carefully and so precisely was absolutely amazing. And, as Tim mentioned, the fact that it was contained the way it was, I think Julianne mentioned it too, it was contained the way it was, did not touch WCD, did not touch the mobile gas station next to it.
It did melt a few tiles on the roof, but that's about it.
Oh, it did, that's about it? And I did notice one of the firefighters had to lean on one of the cars in the gasoline area to spray the water, so, but that fire went on for a while, and also to see the drone that was brought in, to do the circling around above and to go crisscross both directions and take pictures, and then around the perimeter, just so they could do their investigation.
That's a state asset that we just have to ask for, and it shows up.
And it shows up. I was asking about how many there are in this state. Five?
Drones?
Yes.
I can get from the marshal's office up to three, I believe.
Up to three, okay.
But, one's all we really, it's a matter of, it helped with the investigation.
Okay. And then it was demolished, I assume, only after we got the information that we needed out of that?
Yeah, well, we had to take it down to finish putting the fire out. There was fire in the walls, plus the ceiling, the roof came down, so we had to take it down. But, we didn't take it down until we gathered all the information and all the evidence.
So, it was a very interesting chain of events, and so many people to thank, including state officials. And Dave, to you and your department, just unbelievable. And I know they're very proud of themselves. What I also enjoyed seeing was a female call firefighter. I think John and I commented that I wasn't aware that there was one in the area.
She's ours, she's nineteen years old.
She's our call, yeah.
She's going to school, she's actually in the academy right now, the Call Academy. And she's going to school for fire science.
Wonderful. Last name is Pond, I remember seeing that in the back of the jacket.
If only we had a fire station that had appropriate accommodations for female firefighters.
It would make it easier.
It would be great to be able to hire her.
Yes.
Little plug for the fire station project coming along.
Nice plug, I like that.
So, kudos to everyone, and no one was injured, I think one was taken for heat exhaustion.
Yeah, we had one firefighter from Hopkinton, actually, that we ended up transporting. And he was released later that night after receiving, oh, somewhere around two thousand liters, they pumped him full of liquids, and he was very dehydrated, and we was able to go home, and I think he missed one day.
Wow. If you could pass along our congratulations, also to your men who were in charge of the scene, just really just unbelievable. I also, I think we all received a letter from Kevin Carroll also, who I thought made a really good point. He lives in town and talked about his experience with this, and said that we should consider having a group picture taken of all the firefighters who responded to that scene on the sidewalk of Twenty-six West Main with a sign in front that says, "Northborough Fire Department, full response." And hang a copy, and the fire station is part of the NFD history. I think that's a nice idea.
There were eighty-four firefighters.
Oh, eighty-four, so that was hard to gather them all.
There were twelve departments represented.
Twelve, okay.
Not including two additional EMS ambulances, one from Patriot, one from Land. Not including DFS that was there, so, yeah, there would be a lot of people.
There would be a lot, even our department.
Yeah, we ended up having fourteen, I think, of our own personnel there.
Well, if there's anything that we can do, something like that, I think that's a great idea. So, thank you again for everything. Let's see, the other comment I wanted to make was about crosswalks. My daughter, who does quite a bit of running, runs through town, and I've talked to her about this a few times, I usually poll her to find out how people are at the crosswalks, and she's still said about ten percent of the people stop. And, the worst offender, of course, this is where she runs, is the Brigham and Route twenty, is terrible. People just kind of zip on, it's the classic, someone does stop, and then someone goes around thinking that person is going to turn, and then they realize that that person isn't turning, that they're stopped, and they've got to jam their brakes on. So, I don't know what else can be done about that.
It's like speeding.
We have the signage up.
You have to be at the right place at the right time to do the enforcement.
Yeah.
It's more of a public education type thing.
Yeah.
One of the things that people do have to understand, that in order to enforce a crosswalk violation, the person has to be in the crosswalk, not standing on the sidewalk. It's a crosswalk violation. You're not just on the sensory pad, but on the actual, in the crosswalk. And the only people that have to stop are the vehicles on that side of the road. Once you've made it halfway through the first lane, people on the other side have to stop. But, people think that if I'm standing at the crosswalk, we lose crosswalk violations at court all the time, because if the officer testifies that the person was standing on the sidewalk, that's not the violation, it triggers when you're in the crosswalk. And I think that's a common misperception that a lot of people have.
Interesting. Interesting, okay.
We have done crosswalks things where we've used our offices, pushing patrolers.
Yes, yes.
And they actually, in order to even get that, to find someone responsible at a motor vehicle hearing, the clerk wants to specifically know that the officer was in the crosswalk, not standing at the end of the walk, at least.
Okay.
It's not as easy as it looks.
Formative, okay. Thank you. Okay, and I won't read these, but there are a couple of letters that the police department received, which is nice, I'm glad that you include these, people who are very happy about what paramedics had done, and, Father's, oh, Father's Funeral Procession in April. There are just so many things that happen in town as part of people's lives, and they're very grateful for everything you do. So, thank you very much, that is my report.
Let's see, let me start by congratulating the Algonquin and Assabett seniors who graduated in recent weeks. Off to the next phase of their life, whether that's college or working, and whatever the choice is, go and do good things. I also want to make a mention, and we talked about it with Habitat for Humanity, but there was the event this past week to honor the Assabett students who contributed to that project, and I just wanted to mention that, in addition to that project, they've done other work around town at various times. The Pavilion and the gazebo down at the One Thirty-five Fields are probably two of the most obvious examples, but we continue to just have a great partnership with them, give them work opportunities that represent real-world projects, and we get excellent, excellent results on the things that they work on, so, appreciate the help. Just to, I won't recount everything relating to the fire, but I just would like to mention just the tremendous coordination that took place under Chief Parenti's leadership during the fire, with our crew quickly containing it, and then a who's who of mutual aid responders from Central Mass in every direction coming in to assist. I'd like to thank Chief Liver and some of his people for securing the scene and making sure spectators weren't getting too close to the hostilities. And also our DPW department, because one of our mutual responders, one of their vehicles suffered a hydraulic hose rupture, and the vehicle was essentially disabled, and one of our DPW guys was under the truck trying to affect a repair to make it operable again. So, we basically had everybody in town, John was on the scene to help coordinate. It was just remarkable, the cooperation, the coordination, the use of the drone to get aerial views, it was just really quite something to see while it was taking place. So, I just appreciate everyone's efforts on that, and the fact that it was just handled so capably and prevented any further extensive damage in any other direction from that site, so, appreciate it. I'd like to thank everybody for the turnout, the Memorial Day Parade, like to thank American Legion Post Two Thirty-four once again for their activities and taking us from each of the monuments around town and making the appropriate observance. I would like to say that I was the speaker on behalf of the Board of Selectmen at the ceremony at the cemetery, and I did have a fairly significant omission, which I would like to apologize for. The apology appears in this week's Community Advocate, and I think the easiest thing for me to do is just read the text of those remarks. So, "I write an apology for a very significant omission in my remarks at the concluding ceremony of the Northborough Memorial Day Parade at Howard Street Cemetery on Monday, May twenty-eighth. I spoke as a representative of the Board of Selectmen, and it is customary for the speaking selectmen to acknowledge by name the three Northborough servicemen most recently lost. Brian Arstno, Afghanistan, two thousand fourteen, David McAfee, Vietnam, nineteen sixty-eight, and Neil Ellsworth, Vietnam, nineteen sixty-seven. I have mentioned these three young men on prior occasions, at last year's Memorial Day observance, at the December Ellsworth Tree Lighting Ceremony, and from time to time as the topic might arise in our selectmen's meetings. But this year, in placing my focus on the past and speaking about another serviceman, Vincent F. Picard, for whom our American Legion Post Two Thirty-four is named, I lost sight of the present and did not offer the appropriate recognition of these three on the very day above all others, when their service should be gratefully remembered and acknowledged. The omission is most acutely felt for Brian Arstno, because unlike David and Neil, whose Vietnam service is recognized at the Triwar Memorial Observance during the parade, there is no marker or stopping point along the route that serves to represent Brian's theater of conflict and honor his sacrifice. Although I spoke on behalf of the board, the words and the fault are mine alone, I sincerely and humbly apologize to these heroic servicemen, Brian Arstno, David McAfee, and Neil Ellsworth, and to their families and friends." That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jason. Fire?
It was big, we put it out.
You did a good job. Just to say, I can't say enough, and everybody said many eloquent things.
Appreciate it.
But, just watching it that day, it was nothing short of miraculous, the job that you did, keeping that fire from taking out WCD. As we all watched it, it was only a matter of time before it was going to go, and how you managed to do it, and the other communities that helped, it was just amazing. So, as we all stood there watching, I have to say, we all kept waiting, because it was only going to be a matter of time before that next building went, and...
You got to have faith, right?
I did. But you just did an amazing job. Police Department did an amazing job, and the DPW, it was amazing that they were there and roping things off and getting the tape up and whatever. So, all that did it, thank you. And, as somebody that has furniture from R&amp;T like the chief, it was kind of one of those things in Northborough that was always a family business, a family tradition, most people in Northborough had colonial furniture that they'd bought at R&amp;T. Little-known fact, just on election night, R&amp;T used to have a special sale, and everybody would go vote, and then they'd go to R&amp;T and buy their lamps. Lamps were half price on R&amp;T's special sale for election night. Can't get lamps half price anymore on election night. So, that concludes my report. John?
I would just be remiss, I know everybody's piled on, and the fire chief's head isn't going to fit out the door.
No, it's okay.
But it's important, because on two accounts, one, he's so quick to compliment his guys when they do a great job, I want to make sure that I take a moment publicly to thank him for the great job he did. Police and DBW did a great job as well, but our fire chief was the incident commander there, and he was coordinating that whole mess. And even when there were some radio issues and some equipment issues, he kept his composure, and honestly, we couldn't have asked for anybody better at the helm of that operation.
Thank you.
The other comment I want to make is, it was from one of the board members, as we kind of stood off to the side in our supporting role, the comment was made, like, boy, I don't really feel like, you know, we're doing anything. And here's the thing, this is what I saw as I stood off on the side. I saw all of our firefighters in new and appropriate protective gear, I saw brand-new hoes that we bought, that we can put together, I saw a million-dollar or nine-hundred-thousand-dollar ladder truck doing what we acquired it to do, and I knew that all the people, police, fire, and DBW, who we asked to do some pretty dangerous things that day, that they all had the right equipment, and more importantly, they had the right amount of staff to do what they did. So, that's what you do, that's what I do, and that's what the financial boards and committees do. I felt really good, no department, other than maybe with the exception of the city of Worcester, maybe Framingham, has enough fire equipment to handle a house fire. We all rely on mutual aid, we have to, it's the only way that it works. But, our staff was there with everything that they needed to do their job and their role with regard to that fire, and that says a lot about the town and the resources that we make sure we put into place, so that public safety is protected, but our staff is protected as well. So, that's what you do, thank you for that, and I thank the financial boards and committees in-town meeting for the support, everything we bring forward, we explain why we need it and how we're going to use it, and we hope that we never need to use some of that equipment, but you saw firsthand what happens when you do, and we're in good shape. But, he's going to have a big head if I say anything else, so I'm going to stop there. But, thank you for letting me make my comments.
Okay. All right, public comments. Okay, new business. Reappointment of special police officers.
I'll be brief. Thank you. Matthew? This is the first year that we'll be, I'm seeking to reappoint the first two special police officers that we appointed last June. That's a new, well, it's a Back to the Future-type visit, we had specials years ago, we did away with them when we became accredited, but now the State Accreditation Commission now recognizes the need for part-time police, especially, bless you, doing traffic details and the like. We started slowly, just last year, we appointed two, retired Sergeant Jim Bruce and former patrolman years ago, Ray Reynolds. They've gone through all of the required training, they've completed their in-service for this year, their first responder, their CPR, their firearms qualifications, and all the other training mandated by the state, so they're qualified to be reappointed, they both work details. We, I had hoped at some point in time to start bringing on some more specials to both of the part-time or reserve component of the department, but the work just hasn't been there, and I don't want to have people come on and bear the expense of buying uniforms and weapons, because we don't provide any of that for them, to not be able to work details, because that's what they're actually doing it for. So, the reason for that is we've got a bunch of new young patrolmen on the department, they're all hungry, they like to work overtime, and they like their details. In years past, that was not always the case, because the older you get, the harder it is to stand on the road freight out with flapping your arms on an eighty-degree day, so I can speak from experience, I don't want to do it. So, we haven't really had the need, but as the projects in town increase and construction schedules might improve, we may be looking to add on a couple more. But, right now, we're just looking to reappoint Jim Bruce and Raymond Reynolds.
Questions? Hearing no questions, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to reappoint James Bruce and Raymond Reynolds as special police officers for a one-year period through June thirty, two thousand nineteen.
Second? Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. NEDP Memorandum of Understanding, John?
In your packet is a memorandum of understanding between the town of Northborough and the Northborough Extended Day Program. This is the nonprofit group that provides extended day care essentially for children in Northborough, it's housed in the various schools. There's been a twenty-seven-year-plus relationship with this group, so this contract has existed in some form for...
in some form for at least the past twenty-seven years. The memorandum allows them to pay us. They reside in an office. They share office space with the Family Youth Services Department. And what the town gets out of that, in addition to access to a copier and some equipment, is the part-time, nineteen-hour-a-week administrative assistant in that office is actually paid for, through this agreement. So, we get office coverage, they get a little bit of office space that they need and some support. What I'm proposing this year is a four percent increase in the payment from twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars in fiscal eighteen to twenty-three thousand dollars in fiscal nineteen. My understanding is their board has already accepted this, so it's just subject now to approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, do we hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the FY one-two-zero-one-nine Annual Memorandum of Understanding between the Town and Northborough Extended Day Program Incorporated for the use of office space and facilities at the Town Hall and to authorize the town administrator to execute same.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Motion carries. Appointment of boards representative to the Master Plan Steering Committee. As most of you know, when the Master Plan Steering Committee was formed, the Board of Selectmen have a representative that takes a seat on that. In the last month, since we've lost our representative, Jason has volunteered to serve in that capacity, so delighted that Jason wants to do it. Does anybody have any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Selectman Perot to act as the board's representative on the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Okay. Okay, reappointment of Selvi Oyola to the Cultural Council. Cultural Council members can only serve two full terms. This will be Selvi's second year, and she desires to be appointed again, so if anybody has any questions, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to reappoint Selvi Oyola to the Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Execution of Cemetery Deed one-oh-four-nine.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to execute Cemetery Deed one-oh-four-nine as presented.
Second? All is in favor. Motion carries. Any other business to come before the board? Okay, executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, Subsection Three, litigation due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, Subsection Three, litigation due to the chair's